Hello and welcome to study session number twenty nine of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will revise supply under GST page number seventeen to twenty two for fifth round. And we will go to charge of GST. Page number forty four to forty nine for the third round. Then we will do second round of what we studied yesterday, page number sixty seven to seventy one of charge of GST. And then we will be starting with a new chapter place of supply. Let us set up the study session intention, pre-study session intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big back truths in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes. And if I make them, then I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and embrace. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is to not achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. Let us begin, supply under GST. We'll start from here. License, lease, rental and disposal. The dictionary meaning of the term license is a permission granted by competent authority. To engage in a business or occupation or in an activity otherwise unlawful. The dictionary meaning of rental is an arrangement to rent something or the amount of money that you pay to rent something and that of lease. Is to make a legal agreement by which money is paid in order to use land, a building, a vehicle or a piece of equipment. For an agreed period of time. Black's Law Dictionary defines disposal as the sale, pledge, giving away, use, consumption or any other disposition of a thing. Under GST, such licenses, leases and rentals of goods with or without transfer of right are used. Or or I mean. Under GST, such licenses, leases, rentals of goods with or without transfer of right to use are covered under the supply of service. Because there is no transfer of title in such supplies. Such transactions are specifically treated as supply of service in Schedule two of CGST Act. As discussed earlier, one of the parameters to qualify as a supply of goods and or services is that. A supply is made for a consideration. This parameter has been articulated in the following paragraphs. Consideration, the dictionary meaning of word consideration is payment. Consideration need not always be in the form of money. It can be in money or in kind. It covers anything which might be possibly done, given or made in exchange for something else. Further, a consideration need not always flow from the recipient of the supply. It can also be made by a third person. However, any subsidy given by the central government or a state government is not. Uh considered as consideration. A deposit given in respect of the supply of goods or services or both shall not be considered as payment made for such supply. Unless the supplier applies such deposit as consideration for the said supply. The term consideration is defined under section two, subsection thirty one, clause thirty one. Okay, the said definition has been depicted in the form of a diagram as follows. Consideration, payment in money or otherwise for the supply. Money value, monetary value of any act or forbearance for the supply. Okay, payment in money or otherwise for supply deposit to be considered as supply as payment only if. The supplier applies such deposit as concentration for the said supply. By recipient or any other person excluding subsidy given by central or state government, monetary value of any act. Or forbearance for the supply. Let us examine the existence of consideration in the following three scenarios. Donations received by charitable institutions from individual donors without quit pro quo. Artwork sent by artists to galleries for exhibition, no claim bonus offered by an insurance company to the insured. Okay, now because we are reading this for the fifth round, I am just expediting a little bit, okay? See, what is quit pro quo? Quit pro quo means something in return. Now, if I am the donor and I have given some donation to a charitable institution. And that charitable institution out of gratitude has. Put my name uh in a prominent place. Let's say they were, it is a hospital and they were building a wing. And I gave, let's say, two crores to that hospital to build that wing. So, once that wing is built. In front of the wing, they will say donated by Mister Harish. This is as a token of gratitude, but if that display of gratitude acts like an advertisement to me. And benefits my business directly or indirectly, then whatever the donation that I gave. Be treated as consideration and it will be treated as supply, it will not even be treated as a charitable activity. So that's the. Core essence of this segment, which is whatever somebody donates to some place. There should not be anything in return. There should not be any expectation in return. So this in essence means quit pro quo, something in return. So I can gift, I can donate. But I should not expect a return as advertisement. So they cannot say that, let's say if I am having a company, so my company's name should not be in that uh gratitude display. So let's see the example. Bhushan donated a blackboard to yoga nisth Sanstan, a charitable yoga institution. Yoga nisth Sanstan printed underneath the blackboard, so donated good wishes from Mister Bhushan. Shrimati Durga Devi donated some money to a temple in the memory of her late father. The temple trust constructed a room in the temple complex. From such donation and donated by Shrimati Durga Devi in the memory of her father on the door of the room. In the above examples, it may be noticed that there is no reference or mention to any business activity by the donor. No, any business activity of the donor which otherwise would have got advertised. Thus, GST is not leviable where all the following three conditions are satisfied. Gift is made to a charitable organization, payment has the character gift of donation. Purpose is philanthropic, that is, it does not lead to any commercial gain or there is no advertisement. Now, artwork sent by artists to galleries for exhibition is not a supply. As no consideration flows from gallery to the artist. So artists give their work of art to galleries where it is exhibited for supply. However, no consideration flows from the gallery to the artist when the artwork are sent to the gallery for exhibition. And therefore, the same is not a supply. It is only when a buyer selects a particular artwork displayed at the gallery. That the actual supply takes place and applicable GST would be payable at that time of such supply. Next, no claim bonus by the insured to the insurance company. Uh instead of no claim bonus offered by said company to him. The issue which arose for consideration was whether the deduction on account of no claim bonus allowed by the insurance company from the insurance premium. Payable by the insured can be considered as consideration for the. Supply provided by the insured to the insurance company for agreeing to the obligation to refrain from the act of. Lodging insurance claim during the previous year. As per practice prevailing in the insurance sector, the insurance companies deduct no claim bonus from the gross insurance premium amount. When no claim is made by the insured person during the previous insurance period. The customer procures insurance policy to indemnify himself from any loss. Or injury as per the terms of the policy and is not under any contractual obligation not to claim insurance company. Not should claim any insurance claim during any period covered under the policy in view of no claim bonus. It is therefore clarified that there is no supply provided by the insured. To the insurance company in the form of agreeing to the obligation to refrain from the act of. Lodging insurance claim during the previous year and no claim bonus cannot be considered as consideration, okay? Any transaction involving supply of goods and or services without consideration is not a supply unless it is deemed to be a supply under schedule one. Another parameter to qualify as good supply of goods or services is that a supply is made in the course or furtherance of business. This parameter has been explained here in the following paragraphs, okay? In the course or furtherance of business, GST is essentially a tax only on commercial transactions. Hence, only those supplies that are in the course or furtherance of business qualify as supply under GST. Resultantly, any supplies made by an individual in his capacity, personal capacity do not come under the ambit of. GST unless they fall within the definition of business. Meaning of supply made in the course or furtherance of business. Any activity undertaken in course or furtherance of business of furtherance of business would constitute a supply. In order to understand the term in the course or furtherance of business, we need to first understand the term business. As defined under section two clause seventeen, interelia includes any trade commerce. Manufacture, profession, vocation etcetera, whether or not undertaken for a monetary benefit. Okay, definition of business is given. Any trade or commerce or manufacture, profession etcetera, even if there is no pecuniary benefit. Any activity incidental or ancillary to it, any activity of same nature, even if no volume or continuity. Supplier acquisition of goods including capital goods and services in connection with commencement or closure of business. Provision of facilities by club or association etcetera to its members for consideration. Admission for consideration to any premises, services as holder of office. Accepted in course or furtherance of trade or profession. Activities of a race, race club including by way of totalizer or a. Licensed to bookmaker or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Any activity by government or local authority as public authorities. So that concludes segment number one. So we have completed around five till page number twenty two. Okay, now let us go to the next segment which is round three of page number forty four to forty nine in charge of GST. Forty four to forty nine. Okay. Composition levy, section ten of the CGST Act, let us read the baract provisions today. Composition levy, section ten subsection one, anything contrary, sorry. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained in this act, but subject to the provisions of subsections three and four of section nine. A registered person whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year did not exceed fifty lakh rupees. May opt to pay in lieu of the tax payable by him under section subsection, under subsection one of section nine. An amount of tax calculated at such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding. One percentage of the turnover of, one percentage of the turnover in state or turnover in union territory in case of a manufacturer. Two and a half percent of the turnover in state or union. Or turnover in union territory in case of persons engaged in making supplies referred to in class B of paragraph six of schedule two. So this is. Restaurant supply, they are referring to restaurant supply here. And then half percentage of turnover in state or turnover in union territory in case of other suppliers. Subject to such conditions and restrictions as may be prescribed. Provided that the government may by notification increase the said limit of fifty lakh rupees. To such higher amount not exceeding one crore and fifty lakh rupees as may be recommended by the council, further provided that. Provided further that, a person who opts to pay tax under clause A or clause B or clause C. May supply services. Other than those referred to in clause B of paragraph six of schedule two of value. Not exceeding ten percent of turnover in a state or union territory in the preceding financial year. Or five lakh rupees whichever is higher explanation. For the purposes of the second proviso, the value of exempt supply of services provided by way of extending deposits. Loans and our loans or advances insofar as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Shall not be taken into consideration, shall not be taken into account for determining the value of turnover in a state or a unit territory. Okay, so three people are getting benefit manufacturer here. And those who supply restaurant service, two and a half percentage and half percent in case of other suppliers. So I don't know what is this other suppliers anyway, let us read ten subsection two. The registered person shall be eligible to opt under section, subsection one if save as provided in subsection one. He is not engaged in the supply of services, okay, so service providers are straight away excluded from subsection one, so in case of other suppliers. It mean, it does not mean that service providers will get covered in this third clause. Okay, so this first clause of ten subsection two prohibits people who engaged from suppliers. Su- supply of services. He is not engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not leviable to tax under this act. Okay. He is not engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services, okay? He is not engaged in making any supply of services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source under section fifty two. He is not a manufacturer of such goods as may be notified by the government. So these notified goods are, uh those goods aerated drinks. Tobacco, pan masala, all those things. So those people are not eligible for composition levy under ten subsection one. He is neither a casual taxable person nor a non-resident taxable person. Provided that where more than one registered persons are having the same permanent account number. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for the scheme under subsection one. Unless all such registered persons opt to pay tax under that subsection. Ten subsection two A, notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained in this act, but subject to the provisions of subsections three and four. Of section nine, a registered person not eligible to opt to pay tax under subsection one and two. Whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year did not exceed fifty lakh rupees may opt to pay. Instead of the tax payable by him under subsection one of section nine, an amount of tax calculated. At such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding three percent of turnover. Uh turnover in state or union territory, if he is not engaged in making any, any, if he is not making any. Supply of goods or services which are not leviable to tax under this act. Engaged in making interstate outward supplies of goods or services, engaged in. Making any supply of services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source under section fifty two. Then a manufacturer of such goods or supplier of such services as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. A casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. Provided that where more than one registered person are having the same pan issued under the income tax act. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for the scheme under this subsection unless all such registered persons. Opted to pay tax under this subsection. The option availed by a registered person under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. Shall lapse with effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year exceeds the limit. Specified under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. A taxable person to whom the provisions of subsection one or as the case may be subsection two A. Apply shall not collect any tax from the recipient on supplies made by him. Nor shall he be entitled to any credit of input tax. So, no input tax credit for people who availed composition scheme, who opted for compo- composition scheme. If the proper officer has reasons to believe that a taxable person has paid tax under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. Despite not being eligible, such person shall in addition to any tax that may be payable by him under any other provisions of this act be liable to pay. Liable to a penalty and the provisions of section seventy three or seventy four shall mutatis mutandis apply for determination of tax and penalty. Explanation one, for the purposes of computing aggregate turnover of a person for determining his eligibility to pay tax under this section. The expression aggregate turnover shall include the value of supplies made by such person. From the first day of April of a financial year up to the date when he becomes liable for registration under this act. But shall not include the value of exempt supply of services. Provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances insofar as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Explanation two, for the purposes of determining the tax payable by a person under this section. The expression turnover in state or turnover in union territory shall not include the value of following supplies namely. Supplies from the first day of April of a financial year up to the date when such person becomes liable for registration under this act. And exempt supply of services provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances. Insofar as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Overview of the scheme, the composition levy is an, is an alternative method of levy of tax designed for small taxpayers. Whose turnover is up to a prescribed limit. The objective of composition scheme is to bring simplicity and to reduce the compliance cost for the small taxpayers. Initially, the scheme was designed to benefit the small traders, manufacturers and restaurant service providers. So the scheme was fundamentally for the suppliers of goods and only for the restaurant service providers. Not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. However, subsequently suppliers availing composition scheme were permitted to supply other services also, though. Only up to a small specified value. This scheme is contained in subsections one and two of the. Of section ten of the CGST Act herein after referred to as composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Under this scheme, suppliers of goods have the option to pay tax at the concessional rate of one percentage. Of the turnover and the restaurant service providers not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. Have the option to pay tax at five percentage of the turnover. Small taxpayers with an aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year up to. One and a half crores are eligible to pay tax at these rates in the current financial year up to an aggregate turnover of one and a half crores. However, a person engaged exclusively in supply of services other than restaurant service. Is not eligible for this composition scheme stipulated under subsection one and two. In order to benefit, in order to provide benefit of composition. To persons engaged in supply of services other than restaurant service whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year is up to fifty lakhs. A scheme to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover was introduced subsequently. A mixer supplier who is primarily engaged in supplying services other than restaurant service along with marginal supply of goods. Could also avail the benefit of this scheme. The provisions of this scheme are contained in section, subsection two A of section ten. Essentially, the composition scheme under subsection two A. Is for small service providers like salons, stylists, tailors etcetera. This scheme provides an option. To such suppliers to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover in the current financial year with an aggregate turnover of fifty lakhs. Suppliers opting for composition levy need not worry about the classification of their goods or services or both. The rate of GST applicable on their goods or services etcetera. Okay, they are not required to raise any tax invoice but simply need to issue a bill of supply wherein no tax will be charged from the recipient. Okay, so on that note. Okay, we have to complete this page, we will complete this page. An eligible person opting to pay tax under the composition scheme shall instead of paying tax on every invoice at the specified rate. Pay tax at the prescribed percentage of his turnover every quarter through the prescribed form GST CMP zero eight. At the end of a quarter, he would pay the tax without availing the benefit of input tax credit. Return is to be filed annually by a, a composition supplier. Registration under GST law is compulsory for opting for composition scheme. The provisions relating to composition levy are contained in section ten of CGST Act, chapter two of CGST rules. The said rules have been incorporated in the discussion in the following paragraphs. At relevant places. Composition scheme provided under section ten subsection one and two and then ten subsection two A. So we have completed our second segment of revision. Now let us go to the third segment, page number sixty seven to seventy one of the same chapter. Withdrawal from the composition scheme by a taxpayer. Who ceases to satisfy any of the prescribed conditions. So we are talking about validity of composition levy, ten subsection three, red with rule six. The option exercised by a registered person to pay amount under composition levy. Shall remain valid so long as he satisfies all the conditions mentioned in the relevant section and rules. For instance, the option to pay tax under composition scheme lapses from the day on which aggregate turnover of a registered person. Exceeds the specified limit, one point five crores, seventy five lakhs, fifty lakhs during the financial year. Such person is required to pay tax under regular scheme under section nine of subse- under section nine subsection one. From the day he ceases to satisfy any of the conditions prescribed for composition levy. He shall issue tax invoice for every taxable supply made thereafter. Further, he is required to file an intimation for withdrawal from the scheme in prescribed form within seven days of. The occurrence of such event. The effective date from which withdrawal from the composition scheme shall take effect. Shall be the date indicated by him in his intimation. But such date may not be prior to the commencement of the financial year in which such intimation is being filed. Withdrawal from the composition scheme by a taxpayer who intends to withdraw from the set scheme. The registered person who intends to withdraw from the composition scheme shall before the date of such withdrawal. File an application in prescribed form. The effective date from which withdrawal from the composition scheme shall take effect. Shall be the date indicated by him in his application. But such rate, but such date may not be prior to the commencement of the financial year. In which such application for withdrawal is being filed. Denial of option to pay tax under the composition scheme by tax authorities. Where the proper officer has reasons to believe that the registered person was not eligible to pay tax under composition scheme. Or has contravened the provisions of the CGST Act or provisions of this chapter. He may issue a showcase notice to such person. Upon receipt of reply to SCN, the proper officer shall pass an order either accepting the reply or denying the option. To pay tax under composition scheme from the date of the option. Or from the date of the event concerning such contravention as the case may be. In case of denial of option to pay tax under composition scheme by tax authorities. The effective date of such denial shall be from a date. Including any retrospective date as may be determined by tax authorities. However, such effective date shall not be prior to the date of contravention of the provisions of the CGST Act or CGST rules. In each of the above cases. Such person may furnish a statement in prescribed form containing details of the stock of inputs. And inputs contained in semi-finished or semi-finished goods held in stock by him on the date on which. The option is withdrawn or denied from within a period of thirty days. From the date from which the option is withdrawn or from the date of the order denying composition scheme. Any intimation or application for withdrawal or denial of the option to pay tax under section ten. In respect of any place of business in any state or union territory. Shall be deemed to be an intimation in respect of all other places of the business registered on the same pan. A person availing composition scheme during a financial year crosses the turnover of one and a half crores on ninth of December. The option shall availed, shall lapse from the day on which. His aggregate turnover during the financial year exceeds one and a half crores, that is on ninth of December in this case. Composition scheme to be adopted uniformly by all registered persons having the same pan. Proviso to section ten and proviso to section ten two A. All registered persons having the same pan have to opt for composition scheme. If one such registered person opts for normal scheme, others become ineligible for composition scheme. A dealer, Kishori Lal and Sons has two offices in Delhi. And is eligible for composition levy under section ten subsection one. If Kishori Lal and Sons opts for the composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Both the officers would pay taxes under composition scheme. And abide by all the conditions as may be prescribed for the set composition scheme. Composition scheme supplier cannot collect tax, ten subsection four. Taxable person, taxable person opting for the composition scheme shall not collect tax from the recipient on supplies. Taxable person taxable person opting for the composition scheme shall not collect tax from the recipient on supplies made by him. It implies that a composition scheme supplier cannot issue a tax invoice. Composition scheme supplier cannot enter into credit chain ten subsection four. Taxable person opting for the composition scheme shall not be entitled to any credit of input tax. And then imposition of penalty in case of irregular abandonment of uh composition scheme ten subsection five. If a person has paid tax under the composition scheme though he was in he was not eligible for the scheme. The person would be liable to pay penalty and the provisions of section seventy three or seventy four of the CGST Act shall be applicable for. Determination of tax penalty tax and penalty okay a registered person. Of what is not eligible for composition scheme even though his aggregate turnover does not exceed one and a half crores. Trading in palm masala not eligible manufacturing aerated waters not eligible. Receiving any interstate inward supply of goods this does not disqualify they can be eligible. Making supply of goods by exempted by way of notification. These people also are not. A registered person is not eligible for composition scheme yeah exempted goods you cannot supply is not included in your. Who is not eligible supplier engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not leavable to tax so they are also not. Eligible so only option C will apply they can they are eligible but the question says not eligible so option A B and D they are all not eligible. Aladdin electronics is engaged in intrastate supply of air conditioners and has an aggregate turnover of ninety lakhs. In the preceding financial year in the current financial year it wishes to opt for composition scheme. Under section ten subsection one and ten subsection two it will start providing services of repairing of air conditioners. Also from first April of current financial year Aladdin electronics can provide services up to the value of. What to continue availing the benefit of composition levy so the answer will be nine lakhs because previous year ninety lakhs. So up ten percent of that ninety lakhs they will be eligible or rupees five lakhs whichever is higher so in this case nine lakhs will be the answer. So that concludes the third segment also so we have completed this as well. Now let us go to the last segment of today's video which is the fresh reading whatever we are going to read afresh which is. Place of Supply a new chapter let us start place of supply introduction. Okay the chapter overview place of supply of goods other than supply of goods imported into or exported from India section ten. Place of supply of services where location of supplier location of supplier of service and the location of. Receiver of service is in India section twelve. Okay GST is a destination based attacks that is taxes levied at the place where the goods or services are consumed. Rather than the place where they are produced. Place of supply and the location of the supplier is essential to ascertain the nature of supply that is. Whether a supply is in intrastate or interstate in other words these two factors are required to determine. Whether a supply is subject to SGST UTGST plus CGST in a given state or union territory. Or else it would attract IGST if it is an interstate supply. If an interstate transaction is wrongly treated as intrastate or vice versa and a tax is paid accordingly. The correct tax will be required to be paid and refund to be claimed for tax wrongly paid. Though no interest is levied in such a case procedural requirements increase and working capital gets blocked. Where the amount involved is huge hence determining correct place of supply is of the paramount importance. Section two clause eighty six of the CGST Act two thousand seventeen defines place of supply. To mean the place of supply as referred to in chapter five of IGST Act two thousand seventeen. Thus, in order to understand the provisions of the place of supply we need to refer to the provisions of. The relevant chapter of IGST Act two thousand seventeen in simple words place of supply is the place where the supply is consumed. Thus place of supply determines the jurisdiction where the tax revenue should reach. Now the question arises as to how now the question arises as how to determine the place of supply. Goods usually being tangible do not pose any significant problems for determination of their place of consumption. Services usually being intangible pose problems with reference to determination of. Place of supply mainly due to following factors the manner of delivery of a service could be altered easily for example. Telecom service could change from postpaid to prepaid or building address of the customer could be changed. Repair or maintenance of software could be changed from onsite to offline I mean onsite to online. Banking services earlier required customer to go to the bank now the customer can avail service from anywhere. Service provider, service receiver and the service provided may not be ascertainable. Or may easily be suppressed as nothing tangible moves and the and there would hardly be any trail. For supplying a service a fixed location of service provider is not mandatory. And even the service recipient may receive service while on the move. The location of building could be changed overnight sometime the sometimes. The same element may for may flow to more than one location for example construction or other services in respect of a railway line. A national highway or a bridge on a river which originate in one state and end in other state. Similarly, a copyright for distribution and exhibition of a film could be assigned. For many states in a single transaction or an advertisement or a program is broadcast across. The country at the same time an airline may issue seasonal tickets containing say ten vouchers which could be used for travel between any two locations in the country. The card issued by New Delhi Metro could be used by a person located in Noida or New Delhi or Faridabad. Without the New Delhi Metro being able to distinguish the location or journeys at this time of receipt or payment. Receipt of payment. Services are continuously evolving and thus continue to pose newer challenges for example fifteen to twenty years back. No one could have thought of DTH online information, online banking, online booking of tickets, internet, mobile communication. Et cetera considering the fa- difficulties in determining the actual place of consumption of services. The various elements involved in a service transaction are used as proxies for determining the place of consumption or. Place of supply of services a proxy which gives more appropriate result than others for determining the place of supply. Could be used for determining the place of supply the various elements used for determining the place of supply of a service are. Location of service provider, location of service receiver, place where the activity takes place or place of performance. Place where the service is consumed place or person to which or whom actual benefit flows. Proxy which gives more appropriate result than others is used for determining the place of supply. Location of service provider, service receiver, place of performance, place of consumption, actual beneficiary, proxies for determining. Place of supply of services okay separate rules for determining. Place of supply in respect of B two B and B two C transactions in respect of B two B transactions the supply is made. By a registered person to another registered person and the taxes paid are taken as. Credit by the recipient so such transactions are just passed through. GST collected on B two B supplies are effect GST collected on B two B supplies effectively create. A liability for the government and an asset for the recipient of such supplies inasmuch as the recipient is. Entitled to use the input tax credit for payment of future tax liability for B two B transactions. The location of recipient takes care in almost all the situations as further credit is to be taken by recipient. The recipient usually further supplies to another customer. The supply is consumed only when a B two B transaction is further converted into B two C transaction. In respect of B two C transactions the supply is made to an unregistered person who consumes the same and the taxes. Paid actually reached the government B two B transactions in such type of transactions. The recipient is also a registered supplier and hence in and hence eligible to take I T C. B two C in such type of transactions the recipient is a consumer and unregistered and hence cannot take I T C. Provisions for determination of place of supply in GST law basis the on the basis of the above guiding principles. Chapter five of the IGST Act prescribes both general and specific rules to determine. Place of supply of goods and services in various circumstances. These provisions prescribe the provisions relating to place of supply of goods and services in domestic as well as cross-border transactions. At the intermediate level our discussion will be restricted to the provisions relating to the place of supply of goods and services in domestic transactions. That is section ten and twelve only. Relevant definitions continuous journey means a journey for which single or more than one ticket. Or invoices issued at the same time either by a single supplier of service or through an agent acting on behalf of. One of more than one supplier of service and which involves no stopover between any of the legs of the journey. For which one or more separate tickets or invoices are issued explanation for the purposes of this clause. The term stopover means a place where a passenger can disembark either to transfer to another conveyance. Or break his journey for a certain period in order to resume it at a later point of time. The term conveyance has been defined in section two clause thirty four of the GST Act and to include a vessel, an aircraft and a vehicle. Fixed establishment means a place other than the place of business. Which is characterized by a sufficient degree of permanence and a suitable structure in terms of. Human and technical resources to supply services or to receive and use services for its own needs. Location of the recipient of services means where a supply is received at a place of business for which registration is has been obtained. The location of place such place of business where a supply is received at a place other than. The place of business for which registration has been obtained that is to say a fixed establishment elsewhere the location of such fixed establishment. Where a supply is received at more than one establishment whether the place of business or fixed establishment. The location of the establishment most directly concerned with the recipient of the supply and in absence of such places. The location of the usual place of residence of the recipient section two clause fourteen. The definition of fixed establishment for this purpose has been discussed above the place of the definition of place of business is discussed later. So we have read till here page number seven we will stop here. That will be the end of today's study sessions take care thank you have a good study day bye.